She's the chair, she's the chair right next to Tommy, isn't that?
Oh, right.
She's just here for the, uh, the workers' comp. There won't be much of a... Are we ready? Board meeting. Eighty-four.
United States of America, and to be honored with which hands, one nation under God, in the name of this all, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Okay.
Turkey, chicken, whatever it is.
Chickens in the oven. Need a motion to sign the warrants.
Second.
All in favor? We need a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-first of someone who was here at the meeting.
I read them. Most approved minutes, yeah.
Second.
All in favor? What do we talk about? There was a request from a citizen last meeting to, uh, look into possibility of a moratorium on open space, on land trust purchases of open space, I believe that's what it was. We got a response back, which I think I will read. I don't know if sure I comprehend it all, but maybe you can help me with this. Municipal authority to adopt moratorium ordinances is governed by thirty A M R S A forty-three fifty-six. First, the municipality may only adopt a moratorium on the processing or issuance of development permits or licenses issued by the municipality. Second, the moratorium must be needed either or either to prevent an overburden of public facilities or because existing local laws are inadequate to prevent harm as a result of the proposed development. Finally, moratorium ordinances can only be imposed for a definite term of a hundred and eighty days. We went through this when we did the harbor, more field moratorium. And we did it on the grounds of overburdening our public facilities. They may be extended by the municipal officers, but only when the problem given rise to the need for the moratorium still exists. I'm assuming that your question refers to the open space tax laws, which can be found in subchapter ten of Title Thirty-Six. The classification of land as open space is governed by thirty-six M R S A eleven oh nine. Subsection three of this statute requires landlords wishing to classify their land as open space to submit a schedule to the town assessor for review. If the assessor determines that the land fits the definition of open space as provided in the statute eleven oh two, quote, "That land must be classified as open space and subject to taxation under this subchapter," end of quotes. The statute also provides specific criteria the assessor is to use in determining whether the land provides a public benefit, which is a requirement under the definition of open space in eleven oh two. Now, that's something I think we need to be very, um, I, I believe that we need to look into the fact that isn't for the public benefit. Open space taxation is governed by state law. Aside from the initial determination made by the assessor, the town has no discretion in taxing land as open space. If the land meets the statutory requirements, the assessor must tax the land accordingly. In addition, this is not a license or permit for development that is authorized by statute or that the town has established by land use ordinance pursuant to its own rule authority. As such, the municipal authority to adopt moratorium ordinance does not apply here. I hope this helps. So.
It does.
I was saying, what it says is, and the only thing I would, would suggest for the board is that when there is an application for open space, that being that we are also the board assessors, that, that the assessor's agent come to us with the application and at least make us know what is being put in open space, because at this point, we've always been in the dark. And at least then it would go on public record that such and such is requesting open space for a particular reason and that at least there would be some transparency. Mike?
I sincerely thank you for pressing through and getting us a definitive. And that helps in one aspect of this. The other aspect of it is, as assessors, that's one of the many hats you wear, obviously, you need to have time with your agent to keep you up to date on the balance that is in your community. Every community is different, and I know there's other communities looking at the same loss of full revenue lands to these programs. No one argues that there's input that comes from this. It's hard for them to quantify it, and as we see, there is a slow turning to a tourist-based economy. You have more and more micro-letting price grants, C D P G grants that are based on this, uh, going in that direction for a reason. Although, you can't just say it is all wonderful. You need, you need to know the balance so that each year a budget session, you can say, we maybe, we need a hundred and eighty days to work out more details on what, what it's going to do to our taxes. And that's, that's the assessor's duty. But you're good, it's good that you have an assessor as agent, as...
I think it's, it's a hard decision to put on one person when there is so many applications being presented to the town. And so probably, I would suggest that we make a motion to ask the, uh, CEO to come over.
Well, I think we did, that was one of the discussions, that we would going forward make sure that the applicants would be requested to come to the board.
Yes, I think, but he would have a board assessors meeting, and we would review the application, and of course, he would have the final say, I believe, in, but he would be able to come to the, they should present us why they want to take it.
Right, they have an opportunity.
A hundred acres of our tax rolls and what is the public benefit.
I would put a face on it, be accessible to the public, and ask the real questions of how does that benefit us? You know, I'll share quickly, and I know this is beginning of the meeting, so I don't want to take up too much time. But when the, the claims are made of how much it helps to have the land trust here, who's doing the exit survey when the vehicle leaves one of the parking spots at a trailhead? Are you going into town, are you going to eat at a restaurant, are you going to buy gas in town? Really, how do we know? We need an honest exit survey, and then we'll know numbers. But that's not our duty. Our duty is to make sure we don't let the taxpayers wind up paying for something that is unaccountable. So that's why I was asking you in your positions as assessors to press through on that and find out what can we do to slow it down a little bit.
And I think we also discussed at, at one point, and we had these many discussions, the balance of land usage. And I think that's imperative here is to, uh, what's going to go for tree growth, what's going to go for this, what's going to go for that?
Even if we don't work for that reason.
Yeah.
I would even say, I would even say, Michael, you might get somebody with some fancy legalese to look at the phrase, "Existing local laws are inadequate to prevent harm."
Yeah.
Taxes is what the issue is here.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
I'm sure, I'm sure someone might have a lot of fun with that phrase.
And it don't look like they're going to even level off.
So I think someone could have some fun with that.
Yeah, there's a lot of things to tap dance around the, uh...
Exactly, at least we got a new dance hall.
That's right.
That's right.
Sally Ann, long wait, patiently waiting for her welcome.
Can I say, first say, "Welcome"?
Welcome to Sally Ann's.
We're so happy we're here.
So I'm Hadley Friedman, the proprietor of Sally Ann's, and I have two applications submitted to you. The first is for a B Y O V permit specifically for April twenty-ninth. We had a full moon supper on the thirty-first, and we're hoping to do another one on April twenty-ninth. And so, um, I wanted to be able to offer to people that come, that they could bring a bottle of wine or some beer. At the same time, simultaneously, I also want to put in just my wine license. Not interested in beer, not interested in a full liquor license. I would like to be able to do kind of wine and cheese on one or two evenings per week, and it would be probably like a four to seven. Since we have to get up so early the next morning, I'm not interested in doing dinner, but we'll create small plates to accompany a glass or two of wine. So it wasn't an original plan when we opened up, but the deck's nice and...
Enticing.
Right, enticing with the warmer weather coming. And just maybe another offering, you know, in the early evening in town. But not to take away from dinner business, because I, yeah, breakfast and lunch is definitely, I think, going to keep us busy, so, um... Yeah, that's the story.
I need a motion to accept, uh...
I vote that we accept the application for a...
There's two of them, so the application...
Both applications for, uh...
B Y O V.
B Y O V and for A. We call this a limited, uh...
An venus.
Venus, yes.
Venus, venus, yes.
Second, yes. All in favor?
Great, thank you. I think I have to come to town, or to the town office trial and pay, uh, something to...
No, nothing. There's a ten dollar one here.
Yeah, I think to the town I have to pay something.
No, you pay that to the treasurer or the state of the town.
It goes in with your application.
Okay, alright.
If you are really nice to Suzette, she'll make the copies tonight so you don't have to come back tomorrow.
I have to use my car keys.
Confused, I'm...
I guess we didn't read Facebook, uh, they didn't wait when we all signed Facebook.
Oh, right.
Scroll down and check.
Right.
That's right, this is what the active group should take it, whether they have a signature or not, and they'll carry it wherever they want, but then...
Oh, open bids, my favorite.
Is it bids or bid?
It's a bid.
Bid.
It's the one we need.
Mike, we got a buck back home.
Do you have to bet on this? Uh-oh.
You have to make a motion, right?
No, now open the bid, no. You have to make a motion to accept the bid, because we can dispute the bid. Oh, here it is now. It's John Carson. Map eight, lot twenty-three. And there's a check. Oh my goodness. As trustee, I hereby offer the sum of eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars
On bigity, don't.
For purchase of the town-owned property on County Road, map eight, lot twenty-three, by Penelope Pike Lemon Revocable Trust, and any amendments thereto dated February seventh. In support of this bid, I will close a certified bank check in the amount of eight thousand one hundred fifty dollars.
Fantastic.
Whoa.
All right.
Wait, 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 thank you, and our roads, thank you. All tax-related property sold in this fiscal year go to road improvement. Mine is the taxes that are owed on it. Do I have a motion to accept this? Yes. Oh, we got four motions. Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Penelope Pike Lemon. Penny instead. Penelope Pike Lemon.
Someone's making it sound like dessert.
Lemon. She's really, very nice. Did she buy property that X X. sent you that?
One thing, one thing to add to that.
She's in the butter, good, because that was the issue of how to get into the property.
One thing to add, Penny, pay your taxes.
Do you want to make copies with her? She doesn't have, she's got to go back. Very nice, very nice. And that was really very nice of her. She already has a place that she can get to it, that's good. It was really a property that one of the five or six of butters needed to bid on, because otherwise it was going to be a court battle because it's, the X's illegally cut off by one of the butters. Yes, but in the state of Michigan, it can be landlocked, and sometimes that's our, it's a point. This is not snow. appoint Rhonda Wall, complaining board associate member. All in favor? Well, we're, we're still all in shock. Are we going to have a nice little picnic to celebrate your purchase?
She's giving us some off what we can.
No, that's really nice. I think that does make us a very generous bid, and we thank her. And we may not have to fix up school. It's got potholes in it, doesn't it? Just teasing. I live on that street too, and so does the town office. It's probably the last street that was fixed.
Right.
Close street usually just gravel. We do need drainage there, because they're all those downtown... Cassou's house. Sally Ann, so there is a ditch that's going to be done on that street. Where the water will somehow mop it up in the basement of some of the people that live there.
Yeah.
Especially the ones at the end of the hill, right?
Yeah.
Do you get one of those?
No, we haven't, we've done it. We get it from the tide coming in.
Oh, the other way?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, historical deed.
She's at the counter.
Okay. Oh, this is just wonderful. I am so happy to see this state. I would like to make the motion to sign this state. We'll have a second.
Second.
It's for the historical society to get back their well-deserved property after many years of fixing it up. All in favor?
Well, this comes from a Christian, you just need to personally be here Friday.
We need a witness.
I'd like to thank now, because there was an issue originally I sat with the board and talked about we would maintain the easement. Well, it became an issue of insurance on it. Carol was very instrumental in talking to the insurance company. The town is insuring it because they're requiring it, so that's what was changed.
The grant law instead of the grantees, and that caused it to become our property. But we are protected under the tort law that it's very difficult to sue a municipality for a public case. It's like a park, you know, if you were to have a park and someone were to fall, and of course, you would have to only... Did something terrible to the park, otherwise it's just a regular park, and he's going to try to fall it, and you're, you're not liable for it. A municipality is not liable.
But we'd like to assure the select board that at least twice a year, members will walk that and make, or whoever aware if there's a problem, so they don't have to come off and do it, because we're right there every day.
Yes, that would be very, very...
I think you made the entrance to the village look very nice, like a consistent view of the ground.
So pretty. I didn't even know that he was even there.
Most people do.
Bushes and, and all kind of cool, don't they? But you didn't even know it was an open space. It's really nice. Okay, now that we're in such a good mood, we're going to tax collector becoming certified. Suzette, are you getting certified as a tax collector?
Eventually.
And doesn't that cause us to have something reduced?
There's a, called Donald's sentence newsletter from the Tax Productous Treasurers Association. And they said that starting in July first of this year, that any tax product treasures that are certified, M M A will give the town a ten percent discount after a property has an insurance.
That's fantastic. Which equates to how much?
Uh, almost fourteen hundred dollars.
Awesome, so you're going to get certified, aren't you?
Yeah.
How many classes do you have to take?
Three and one... Because I'm not writing out of...
Oh, so...
Go to your office tomorrow.
You have to take three classes?
There's three, um...
At that convention?
No, there's, um, excise tax is one of the classes. Excuse the phrase, but this is what it's called. I've got the job now, what? And, um, cash management. And then one of the credits I need, um, is you have to, uh, have an article printed in their newsletter.
I mean, you were in the newsletter the last time?
Yeah, but I didn't print it.
Doesn't that count?
She went down to...
Did all the copies you gave to him?
She went down to testify in front of the Augusta committee on the, uh, of their land. Was it pressed after the elderly? You've got a good comment from Bucket Davis yesterday, I talked with him, and he said you did an awesome job. Yeah, she did. Put us on the map, it was great. Okay, workers' comp discussion.
Yeah, workers' comp on it last week, and, um, people that we pay through accounts payable, which is not payroll, is actually added to our workers' comp premium. So I contacted M M A, workers' comp, and they suggested that election workers, um, we have one of two choices. We can make them provide their own certificate of insurability, or we can have them file a waiver that we have paperwork for. If they make the waiver and get approved, they're not covered by our insurance. But then again, if they're here, if they fall, they crack their head open, they're not covered.
So what's the cost to the town?
I haven't heard back, it's one of those intricate things that they have to do their magic. I haven't heard back, but I interned top two Corinne Steves at M M A, she said that Italy suggested that they be considered employees under cable. Because even going through like a ten ninety-nine, if you're over six hundred, if they fall and get hurt or something happen, the insurance company could not cover it.
It's more of an... People are already covered.
The spiking, yeah, the spiking, those are some...
So you're talking about election workers there.
Like election workers, if you have some of them, you know, paint the deck, and they just, yeah, they moderate it, yeah.
So, okay, so, we're just going to probably listen to your suggestion.
I suppose they suggested, probably it was a C O.
Okay, um, community cleanup day. Alright, our citizen came to me, um, I don't know, Mr. Bankruck Martin, said that they were having a lot of problems on North Leback Road with trash, and they were walking and picking it up, and it just seemed to be getting any better. So we have a community cleanup beach day, and I was thinking some way that we could have a community cleanup day, including the roads and the beaches, all of the same region, and then they could bring the trash up to the dumpster up at the town office, and we would designate a, a day with a rain date on Sunday, a Saturday with a rain date on Sunday, to clean up the whole, I mean, all of you, wherever you live, like, go out and clean a little bit of the road.
Clean from your, your driveway to your neighbors on both sides, things like that.
We, uh, we, we are at the recycle committee next week, I'm going to bring that up. We have now a student as part of our group, Landon Farrell, and have him presented to the school, and we're thinking about May the eighteenth or nineteenth.
Okay, so, but we choice...
If that's what's happening, everybody else.
We're talking, we'd like to at least go out as far as North and South Leback, sure, it's North Leback and South Leback, because the marathon runs on South Leback, and, and I understand there's some issues up in North Leback, so I guess if we really have to...
There are a couple of citizens who walk along that...
Flyers out.
Put beer cans on top of the trees, on the branches of the trees.
And how do we feel about that, good or bad?
I think it's a good idea. I, you know, I, but I would suggest that we incorporate the schools, uh, because kids live all over the place, and if you could incorporate them to do it, it seems to end with the recycling and cleaning up.
As long as they're safe.
Yeah, yeah. Well, at one time, we had a series of those reflector jackets that the kids, this is way before any of that time, when, what's her name, Glitzy was here, because, uh, they, they were, you know, the reflector jackets...
Well, do you think we can borrow, we can borrow the marathon reflector jackets to do the cleanup day, and John, you let us do that?
Yeah.
Don't you know where they are?
Uh, they're not in your garage.
They're not in your garage, Michael?
The cleanup, could certain organizations in town sponsor a section of...
I think that's a great idea. Yeah, we really need to kind of coordinate that.
Someone will be here to know that I'm not just bringing up my household garbage, I'd like to get rid of it for free.
Right.
Yes. Well, they probably need somebody at the dumpster there, you know, really...
Let's discuss this next Friday. The most planned, and, uh...
It sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
We just recently had a picture of one of our residents on the beach with one of these giant mooring balls that was cracked open and styrofoam was inside.
Yes, the pellets, yes.
And, uh, there should be a spot where as soon as someone finds something like that, if they want to put the sweat equity into it, pick it up, bring it down that site, whether it's the recycling center, or here's the town office, because there is a concern of this stuff, and we're putting plenty of it into the water, there's no doubt about it. Just, just look at our shoreline. There's blue gloves and every color, it's like confetti, it's plastic confetti floating on top of the weed.
Oh, makes sense that we do it in the spring. Because in the winter, things fall overboard, you know, you can't see that they threw them overboard, there's treacherous out there.
I haven't gotten into the line of those, inviting people to go into a dangerous location, but let's grease all the rocks and walk around on that to pick up garbage, okay?
Do, you had a question?
I would just like to add, I think it'd be appropriate if the town crew would be able to help with picking up some of the heavier items, picking up the bags that people may create and set on the side of the road. That's not right around, I can, I mean, that was one of the things I was going to bring up from public comments this year, is that this is a good time, yeah, there's not a lot of traffic, and the signs of Maple Tree Road, North Leback Road, South Leback Road, all of these roads have got their fair share of junk.
I like that better. That's a better idea. We let, but nobody wants to put some of their stuff in their car anyway.
I think in Blue Hill, well, you were part of it, so they, everybody congregated at the school, and maybe different businesses or organizations, you know, could pass out vows of water. I mean, Sally Ann's would do it, or Apple's, or whatever, to get people there. But they also provided the bags.
Yes, you do, we provide the bags, so you know which bags, what.
And then they, and then they did leave the bags, like, there was a certain time or something, so by two o'clock, like...
Yes.
And then town trucks came by, or...
So they provided the bag, we would know that would be a bag.
Well, also, you're leaving it on the side of the road, the control factor is not only the color of the bag, but it's on the side of the road right where the stuff is collected.
Yeah, right.
And the timing is closer, you're picking it up at the same moment.
I've picked up alongside County Road a number of years, and it's really appalling, some of the stuff that's there. And I, I think the town needs to think a little bit carefully about how to deal with some of the hazardous things.
Well, you do have to be...
Needles, broken grass.
There's a way, and that's why the children...
I picked up a bit of...
They, I go to the store and put in a soda bar all the time.
At one time, you remember we did it down, but they dumped it at Stockford Park, we got a dumpster down there.
Yes.
We did hot dogs or something.
But the point is, it is how do you deal with hazardous waste on the side of the road if you're getting children involved? So you really need to, one adult, one child.
They would be up to tell them not to touch it, but if they're adults, just don't touch it, yeah.
You know where it is, yeah.
And hopefully, adults will be super positive.
Yes, yes.
Kids wouldn't hopefully necessarily be out.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Kind of teens are, so if you had the meeting point or a place to meet, and then you...
Children for each adult.
Right.
Yeah, Byron?
Actually, um, when the school did it, teachers took their class, and the teacher walked with them and collected it. Because you'd see, some classes did waterside, Main Street, uh, water...
And they stayed within the town as well, they, they...
But after a while, they started crisscrossing, and there's no reason why the kids can't spread out, like somebody else said, you know, that's their neighborhood too. Maybe they'll be a little less cautious when they see somebody throwing something out. I just bring that up.
But maybe two birds with one stone, if we're going, if we're going to give out bags and work with the town to pick it up, maybe we have the location for the start of the event, at the town garage, which people have wanted to have as a...
Are you going to get people to do it on a Friday, I don't know.
That way, a lot of people will want to come, have sort of...
What's wrong with May nineteenth?
May nineteenth is a... May nineteenth is a, I'm always thinking of it as a school activity on Friday.
Oh.
By May, kids in my memory are chomping at the bit and they really can't wait to get outside.
And we have the town crew working and not on Saturday.
And it's a.
Well, that would be a great idea, my friend.
I'd like to hear more advanced idea about the, including the location at the town garage.
Well, the location's at the town garage and maybe with water available and maybe we work something out. Some, some of the money we've saved, we do something that we can do and incorporate it as well as a.
Yeah, a little open house we never had.
Open house, a town garage.
That's a great idea, Dan.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to do that on a Friday afternoon. Is he doing Friday?
Or, yeah, you might do it for our celebration on Saturday.
Well, you gotta have.
What about give proof of proof?
I think Friday's a good.
Well, some information such as the community Facebook thing that announces that
Up here.
When the times and places are.
Yeah. Yeah.
Had a sign out, yeah.
This is a good time for that, because last year we had the prison crew come do this.
We don't have that this year.
Have younger home prisoners.
No, that's unfortunate.
Anyway, yeah, and we can do it during the recycle. It was in my head to do.
It tends to be until May eighteenth.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's light enough till seven now, isn't it?
Yeah.
It'd be fine on Friday, even if people work, they can help for an hour.
We should put it on July the.
I'm hoping we don't have any more. Sewer abatement, we have a sewer abatement. Yeah, there's two. We have two sewer abatements, one for six, fifty-six-ten, recent computer error. One for one forty-three-fifty-two, recent busted water pipe. The water company requested that. So I'm, I'm making motion we sign these two sewer abatements. We have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor? When Ricky finds out, it's the head of our public works, that between last town meeting, we all voted for the, all the tax supply property funds after the back taxes are paid and the cost would go to road improvements, so this is playing a one twelve for the road companies.
Yes.
Although we already did really well this year, so. Other business gonna go, oh, what broken things? Um, other business, you know, things.
Yes, um, sorry. The town of Quebec is seeking bids, our municipal bids. This will be in the paper, the next issue.
Awesome.
Roadside mowing, landfill mowing, airport mowing, municipal heating oil, municipal heating propane, general assistance, propane, kerosene and heating oil, gasoline and diesel for the trucks, trash removal for municipality, municipal facilities and vehicle repairs. Uh, bids need to be in by Tuesday, May fifteenth. They'll be opened at the select meetings meeting, May sixteenth. And that's some more information.
Can we include last, the last move about pellets?
Yeah, we're gonna put one pellet thing.
For biofuels?
Let me add that. Um, I brought something on, but it's not too late for that. Okay, Barbara?
I'd like to ask the select board to consider, at the last school board meeting, um, Mike Jenkins asked if he could not get the AOS as a unit to bid out on oil and things like that and bring the price down. And the superintendent was saying, well, people up by cows wanna use VJ Tamaro and some of these guys don't come all the way down. I'm throwing this out there to you. Would the select board consider possibly using what the, the school uses for oil and buying it? Because we'll know what it, what it costs, they have, how much they spent, along with ours, you need to be able to get a better price.
Like a bulk buy?
Yeah. I'm just throwing that out there, because some of you all know we have a school budget meeting coming up soon and I, I know it backs it up a little bit as far as the, the oil, but we're looking for a way to save money. In our school, we, we spend a lot of money, I think it's at eighty-five thousand dollars on oil. Well, if you know what, how many they're using and they can keep track, the oil company and how much the school uses, it just comes out of their budget to pay us and then we know how much we have here.
Oh, that's what, I think she's put it in paper, the bid, the bank has gone into quarticade.
It's not, it's not too late though, because it.
But you'd have to.
I'm asking how the information's from the school.
Well, from here, but from the school board, it's a very good idea, but it probably needs to, some homework. We'd have to meet with the school board and.
Well, I'd like to throw that out there, maybe for another year, but because we gotta find a way to.
I think when we, when we have our joint meeting with the school board to finalize the budget, we should bring it up.
I think the school board itself would go for it, because the superintendent doesn't think it's kind of flawed.
But we don't know how much they even spent yet, do we, on the.
Well, we know that they allocate eighty-five thousand, we don't know how much is spent.
Well, yes. We'll find out in the next meeting.
Yes.
There's gonna be a school board meeting on April thirtieth and they're gonna discuss the budget at four thirty, April thirtieth. And the select board, I'm hoping, will be there and the budget committee and any concerned citizen, so that we can ask, get questions answered way before the June general meeting and then it's really too late to change anything. I specifically. Yeah.
Okay. I have another announcement, uh, this, we got word yesterday that e-waste is back on at Quebec Recycling. The Zekos are there now, so, um, bring your junk.
Electrical junk.
Electrical junk. And one final announcement, uh, nomination papers are available April thirtieth.
There are, I don't have a list with the.
And I have a.
Go through the last one. Two select board spots open, um, and I don't know about the rest.
Complete list will be at the next meeting.
So committee updates, Tony?
Is this your other business section?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to just report regarding Economic Development Committee and, uh, little by little, each year, we have more and more jobs in our community seasonally for young people as waitresses and waiters and, or kitchen staff. And should the Economic Development Committee be the one to consider some sort of a job fair to let kids know that there's employers here, there's businesses here that are looking for people to staff their restaurants? I say this because I, I'm nothing against the, the people that come from away to, really from away, to work at Victor's for the summer, but I, I gotta believe that there's kids looking for a job that would have that job. And maybe if they just get a little bit of the help, like, well, they didn't know that there was gonna be a job fair day sponsored by the Economic Development Committee, that can maybe lead these kids to and introduce them to maybe a little, uh, socialization to be good waiters and waitresses.
That, that is something that, um, is very important. I don't see you doing it at the elementary school, because they can't, you know, they're not.
Hundred years, yeah.
Yeah. We don't have to. Yes, planting a seed. Yeah, no, I agree with you, I agree with you. And I'm not sure that the schools, it's been one of my bugbears for a long time, that, uh, in the curriculum, they don't have a heavy emphasis on hospitality and that kind of. Especially in an area where tourism is so important.
Yes.
And, um, let's hope that happens.
Alright, well, it's just that, that's a nice thing.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Alright, let's finish with committee, uh, committee updates. Recycling is when? And harbor board is the fourth?
Twenty-third, twenty-third.
We're, it's the third, we're, it's the Friday, the thirty.
Again, yeah. Julian, I'm not, I know, I'm out of the loop, I'm sorry, I apologize. Dan?
Uh, RLF.
May first?
May first, three o'clock.
Yeah.
And, um, I have no update on the marijuana.
You know?
At this time, no.
You haven't met yet.
We have not met.
Because you're really grateful fifteen for, like, many members.
I'm up soon.
A question.
Yes, can you explain what LRF is?
LRF what?
LRF, you're a loan.
You're a loan fund.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That is, um, if you have been denied credit, uh, at a bank and you have need to start, um, a business or whatever, you apply to that.
Thank you.
Economic development is April the eighteenth at three.
Okay.
So that's another one of our busy days.
So city parver is April twenty, uh, twenty-sixth at six o'clock and we're doing well with that. It's coming along smoothly.
Dana called me, um, regarding the high school ad hoc committee. He is having trouble getting committee members together, but they, they will be having a meeting sometime in April, but it's to be announced.
And that's an ad hoc committee, which means, and they're done with their research, they're done. It's not an ongoing.
I think we're pretty much done.
Um, overdone.
Okay, I'll leave that up. Uh, what other leaders?
Same as.
You weren't saying.
Shellfish, there's a shellfish conservation, uh, for your hours. If you're a clam digger and you wanna get your conservation hours at nine thirty this Sunday on Bar Road.
Where's Bar?
The rain date is Sunday. Oh, did I say Sunday? Oh, sorry, it's the seventh on Saturday at nine thirty and the rain date is ten thirty on the eighth. And you have to bring a bucket and clam hat. The rain date is eleven.
No, it's not eleven.
It's nine thirty, five thirty and ten thirty. Uh, it's on the.
And I believe it's only for four hours.
So make it ten forty-five, maybe.
Yeah, can you read that real quick, because I thought. Anyway, um, it's four hours and there'll be people from, uh, the clam committee there. You're gonna be digging little clams from the high tide down to the low mark and then, uh, taking some of them over to Carrot Place Cove and then the whole area is gonna be closed after that for a length of time, so that the clams can grow. And for people who have just moved here, the clam industry nears, employs nearly ten percent of our population. So it's a very, um, very.
Important.
Important economic viability here and we're trying to keep whole world on it. So only Quebecers can clam in the flats and ten percent, non-oresent. And we have ninety miles of it, so it's great, big part of Quebec. We have to go into executive session if there's no other public comments.
Yes, we do.
Uh-oh. See, all the answers go in there. Not first. Okay, who wants to go first?
Now, it was a strange one. Now, I used to number one and I talked with Renee about this. Town crew got out and did some substantial damage to the shoulders of the roads in Lebec. Question is to the board, are you aware of the damage and the different sites and the extent of damage done? And do you get out and ride around? Uh, we dropped a plant blade down and used it as a road grader to plow back a lot of, we're just saying, that has accumulated over the years and has been brought up many times. We got to the fact that it limits the amount of water that can flow off the road to, uh, keep the roads from deteriorating with washing down shoulders. And I just don't understand why the town doesn't, as managers of the town, don't sit down and put together some type of a program every year for projects that need to be paid attention to in regard to keeping this town as, as major expense free with proper maintenance of some of the facilities. I, I, another one that drives me nuts is road signs that have been beat down or knocked down. These are public signs that have been beat down, knocked down and then just cropped back up and they're all beat to hell, dead, twisted, right on Main Street going up over the hill. These, the, uh, road signs designating the names of the streets, three of them are twisted around at ninety degrees, so anybody that comes into town is gonna be totally, uh, out of line in regard to what road am I on? And those are just simple things that can be repaired. Another sign down here is standing off at a thirty-degree angle, which is unsightly. And some of these things are maybe a half an hour, three quarters of an hour, a little bit of attention and I, I would think that the board should sit down and set and create a plan for the highway crew, the town crew to attend to during the summer.
I have a very good idea.
Does that ever come up? Do you ever sit down and think about putting something that's gonna last four months?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last thing?
I said, does that ever come up? Do you ever sit down and have a couple of meetings in regard to looking at different areas of town that need to have some attention to with just routine maintenance? Again, picking up some of the mattresses and tires and the ditches, cleaning up ditches, cleaning out cullets and a block. I think I'm, of course, I'm on the Lebonne bedroom frequently, but I do travel the other rooms. And I look at these cullets that are blocking water building up behind and little fraction is when dirt reaches its maximum obsorb, obsorb, obsorbity, it's a function of water. Correct, thank you. And it turns into mush. And when that happens, anything, a heavy truck or anything that's, that's substantial weight to it, just ripple effects and makes waves up and down the road and the road gets beat to heck. And, and a lot of the stuff, I think, is town crew responsibility and needs to be done.
I, I think you have a lot of points well taken and I think the only thing we all have to take into consideration to answer your question, do we sit down with public works? We rely on the foreman of the public works who reports to our town administrator, who is the road commissioner, and they together decide which road is the worst, in the worst case. I just would like to draw your attention to a stretch of road in Route One right now that's state owned and it's absolutely impassable and it's much worse than our town roads. We have thirty-six miles of roads and three people to maintain them. If we were to, um, pay all thirty-six, it's a hundred thousand dollars in this year's market price estimated for one mile of road.
Maybe this road.
So, to answer your question, I think that what we do is when there is a real legitimate problem of a particular spot, a citizen will call, we'll wait it down and we will immediately call public works and they'll go out and see what they can do. But as far as really having the roads perfect, it's not gonna happen.
Oh, I understand that.
And not even in my lifetime or.
But some of this, I mean, when the children are being washed away, that's the hill that's, that's down on North Lebonne Road. Water goes down, rainstorm, it goes down the north west side of the road, crosses across the road in a substantial amount where just a little bit of greater work would get it to flow away from the road can runs across the road and there's a drop off there that deep at this point where it just washes off.
So, I think, yeah, I think a lot of, uh, work was done on North Lebec Road last year. I remember seeing Ricky out there quite frequently.
Well, I'm not there, I didn't, I swear I'm not there.
Well, last year was the first that we had the excavator that was prepared to move the ditching.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And I did speak to our, the public works director the day you came in and brought up these, uh, issues to me. And I did call him and it's, it's, I mean, there's a lot of work that's gonna be done this spring and summer.
Hopefully so.
You're waiting for the frost to.
That whole cloud incident where throwing great, I mean, substantial amount of dirt upon the people's property was not right.
Uh, well, just right, it's, it's in a right of way, I don't know. What if we hire temporary summer help from the school? But, but.
It's insurance.
Um, and the age, and age, yeah, we need to.
Alright, we just need a prison doctor. We need a chain doctor.
One more thing which.
Oh, we had two more people, hands up. I'm sorry, we can't actually, you know, if you have a specific area that you relate to Renee, I'm sure she will let public works know.
Thank you. And June Clark, again, does this, this, uh, conservation land that is being bought up in, in the town of Lebec and then tax free and a burden to all of the taxpayers. I have no problem whatsoever with anybody doing what they want, as long as it's legal and they pay their taxes. It's, it's a community that needs to have everybody's adding to and not special situations. So I'm totally against conservation land. If they wanna have conservation land, then pay the taxes. And I did get in touch with a couple of state reps, uh, was a Joyce Maker. She never responded, but William Tool did, nice little note, stated that he was totally in agreement with the fact that it is a burden on the communities in the state of Maine, but the legislation, it comes up frequently as far as what he stated, uh, but it seems to just slide through the cracks. So, my quick thought there is that, uh, as the managers of the town and showing some concern for this situation, So, my quick thought there is that, uh, as the managers of the town and showing some concern for this situation, it would be appropriate, I think, that a few folks would address the representatives as well, and let them know that you're, just email, shot little thing, and say this is a burden that needs to be brought up. And I would like to ask the board to ask Renee if it would be possible to get in touch with some of the local towns, telephone call, short conversation in regard to, are they aware of the situ, I'm sure they're aware of the situation, and if they show any concern, so that this town could have a rough idea in regard to, it's a region, it's a region situation, and I think that the more the communities know how other communities feel about it, the more power you're gonna have in regard to trying to get it turned around and making it a little more fair for the average taxpayer.
I think, I think things do work slow, but I know Jim and Renee in the town, A, has sent documentation, and B, they did have a meeting where Lebec was represented in regards to that exact situation, so it's...
And we sent a letter. And we...
Yes, it gets discussed every year, and then gets put away, but at least something stirring a little bit.
Yeah.
There's discussion going on, which is helpful.
It's interesting, though, that Maine has, percentage-wise, lower than some of the other states in New England. You know, I, it always feels like we've got a lot, but in fact, we don't.
Well, west, five, ninety percent of the population, but, but government...
No, not, of course, Mike.
Well, what's interesting about that, this is just about that point, is in these percentages, is just recently, we all learned about Sinclair Broadcasting and how they hand out the same script, and everybody inherits it.
Yes, yeah.
We were barraged by a similar ideological presentation convincing us that land trusts are good for us, but we don't know that. They, some people wanna believe it, we wanna believe it, but we wanna think we can all afford it.
Yeah.
So they changed the argument to ninety-four point five percent of our lands are on the tax rolls. No one's ever questioned how much is on the tax rolls, what we're questioning is the amount they're allowed not to pay. Is that fair to the rest?
That's right, that's right.
And so that's...
Let's move back to my line, thank you.
Does someone else have product, Gack?
Something, okay, you made your comment?
Well, I have another one, I'm waiting for public.
Go ahead, public.
Oh, it keeps going, it's like the energy button.
Giving the license for wine and cheese patty, there's one thing I just wanted to point out. I've sometimes seen these wine and cheese parties over on the street, and blocked Water Street. And I think if it had, the people, no matter where, people should stay inside. I was coming down, was, well, it was an opening at Landmark's, and Water Street was blocked. Particularly the right-hand side, the people out there drinking in public. Now, you cannot get from Coe Hills upstairs to things without going inside, Glenn will not let you walk around, what, the ad between the stair and the door. And I think town organization should realize that it is illegal to drink in public, no matter who invited it is. And I remember one time coming down Water Street, on my way to Coe Hills, and the right-hand lane was blocked. I tried to go around the left-hand lane, people started shoving at me, telling me to slow down, and, you know, and it was rather, um, obscene. But I was told by people, uh, who were drinking on, on the street, and that is illegal. And I'm sure you'll take, I'm sure they'll be...
Was that at, was that at Landmark's, they were trying yelling obscene obscenity?
Yes, because they were, they were blocking Water Street coming out from the opening, and they were, they were drinking.
We certainly could be more diligent, I know we do that with Frank's Restaurant, I know Will rope, uh, so maybe going forward, just make sure a little more...
Yeah, I mean, the land next to it, it blocks Landmarks, that's fine, that's like on, uh, Coe Hills deck. I haven't said anything until you, until you brought it up, and I just realized that...
My insurance went in.
Well, I, I, I can say, I, I think I'm supposed to say something, so I have to, you know, it's part of the, of making sure that, um...
It won't be outside, so, yeah.
But I don't, if there's other festivals, I don't know anything about that, so.
People don't break the law. So...
But, but good point.
But I need to make good pumpkin, uh, cake.
We sure do.
I'll try it.
I hope you do.
Anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, some time ago, I asked you all about the condition of the ladders on the commercial pier.
Ah, she's gonna answer it.
Excellent.
Thank you. Um, over the holiday weekend, the Harvard Master met with Jerry Morrison, he came over, I thought, at Low Tide Saturday, and he's going to not only give us an estimate on the piling, an estimate on the ladders.
Thank you.
And we should have it any day.
And I'm on the phone every week with Duckles as well, that's what we're missing to fix.
And I ask her all the time, Tom, you have a ladder, so I'd like to know.
And to inspect the other ladder.
As somebody out there that is interwobbing and has...
My shirt.
It's amateur.
Like, also, they're gonna inspect the other ladder.
At the mercy of the company.
And examine their condition, and maybe repair them also.
Well, I, I, and, and the whole reason is, look at these same ladders.
Well, all the others were... Yep.
And back then, the bottoms are what go, it, the metal just, it's in the water, that's that one zone there that just goes quicker than anything.
Well, they met, they waited to met at Low Tide, so I see, I'm pretty sure there's some of that.
All right, thank you.
We've requested for all four to be good.
Yep.
That's good.
Thank you.
Okay. So, without any other public comment, oh, yes, we, we also...
We, we lost a town, town icon here lately, um, and we'd like to extend sincere sympathy to Jed Coggan's family. Jed was a swatman for a while of years, he and his wife Mary ran a store downtown, across from Peacock, that people frequented, um, a lot. Um, and we wish, um, this family all this sincere sympathy.
Thank you.
And they, I do believe they're having a service on, um, the eighteenth of the, of May.
Of May?
Of May.
Of May?
Of May, I believe.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you, Julia. So, we're gonna, uh, need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into check...
For MRSA.
Four, five, six.
A, and...
Four, five, six.
F, second. Second, I'll say there, here to take a moment to break.
Oh, I didn't hear that.